...Pri Kindergarten Foundation for the Common Core and the Pyramid Model. Our teaching teams participated in training seminars on the Pyramid Model at our annual Staff Development Day, which was taught by one of the master cadres for the Pyramid Model. The Pyramid Model is comprised of practices and approaches used to promote social-emotional competency in young children and address challenging behaviors. Throughout the year, UPK students became more aware of their community. Initially, the students' knowledge of their community didn't go far beyond their family and friends. The students learned about their school community and their neighborhood community. In the past, our UPK students would walk to the local senior center during the holidays. This year, the students invited the senior center to their classroom to share their school community with their neighborhood community. We also invited the Cicero and North Syracuse Fire Department to visit our UPK students, which is always a wonderful experience for them. We invited the professionals from iCareofCNY to return to our UPK classrooms to conduct vision screenings on the students. This year, five children were identified and fit for eyeglasses. The UPK students also incorporated their extended families into the classroom community. In addition to donuts with dads and muffins with mom, the students invited their grandparents to the classroom to decorate cookies. The students are very proud to show their school to their extended family. Parents and relatives are always welcome into the classroom. The UPK students really enjoy when a family member comes to the classroom to read their favorite book. And in September, we incorporated MyPlate, which is a program initiated by the USDA, into our UPK curriculum. MyPlate encourages children to build healthy eating styles to last a lifetime. The MyPlate activities visually define appropriate portion sizes and making healthy choices. The UPK students really enjoyed the interactive implementation of these lessons throughout the school year. Information about MyPlate was sent home to the UPK families, as well as informational flyers, recipes, and useful tips. We continue to implement the Learn as You Grow book bag. The UPK students have the opportunity to take home a book bag which contains a special book to read and specific activities to complete with a family member. This gives the families who are unable to come to the school the opportunity to participate in their child's learning process. Our newest school-to-home activity for the 2017-2018 school year is a monthly newsletter called Backpack Connection Series. This series of newsletters are produced by the Technical Assistance Center on Socioemotional Intervention for Young Children. The topics discussed in the newsletters align with the Pyramid Model and will assist parents on a number of topics. We have included some of these newsletters in your folders. Through educational and social experiences, each UPK student has been given the opportunity to develop as a whole child, socially, emotionally, physically, and cognitively, and has a strong foundation for a lifelong love of learning. Learn as You Grow implements various assessment tools when measuring the children's academic success. These tools provide valuable information about each student's individual learning and development. Their growth is reflected in our data-driven results. Here is an example of the results from our PPVT testing, which is completed in early fall and spring. The data we are showing is representative of the whole UPK program. This graph represents the North UPK 5 classroom. In the fall, the youngest developmental age was 44 months, or three years, eight months, and the oldest developmental age was 79 months, or six years, seven months. In the spring, the UPK students were assessed again, and the youngest developmental age was 57 months, or four years, nine months, and the oldest developmental age was 102 months, or eight years, six months. This graph represents the Cicero UPK 1 classroom. In the fall, the youngest developmental age was 35 months, or two years, 11 months, and the oldest developmental age was 74 months, or six years, two months. In spring, the UPK students were assessed again, and the youngest developmental age was 43 months, or three years, seven months, and the oldest developmental age was 93 months, or seven years, nine months. The UPK students are also assessed on capital letter recognition, lowercase letter recognition, and letter sound recognition. Students are assessed in September, January, and May using the Fox-in-the-Box Assessment Tool. This graph represents the capital letter recognition in the North UPK 2 classroom. On average, the students recognized nine of the capital letters in September, 15 in January, and 20 by May. This graph represents the lowercase letter recognition in the Cicero UPK 3 classroom. On average, the students recognized 12 of the lowercase letters in September, 16 in January, and 20 by May. This graph represents the letter sound recognition in the Cicero UPK 4 classroom. On average, the students recognized two of the letter sounds in September, eight in January, and 12 in May. During the 2016-2017 school year, 20 students came into the program with IEPs. Learn as You Grow made 18 referrals for evaluation, and of these 18 students, 14 of them received services. Included in your folders this evening are some examples of the information we distribute to UPK families. First, we have the UPK Frequently Asked Questions, which are distributed to families at open house. The FAQs, as we like to call them, answer some commonly asked questions about the UPK program and give parents the opportunity to revisit the information throughout the school year. We have included the Frequently Asked Questions for both the morning and the afternoon students. The ABCs of UPK are very similar to the Frequently Asked Questions, however, this is distributed to families in September, once UPK is underway. The ABCs are a follow-up and reminders of all of the Frequently Asked Questions. We also have included some of the Backpack Connection newsletters that are new, coming to the 2017-2018 school year. We will be sending them home to families on a monthly basis, and these newsletters are available in various languages if needed. The last piece of information in your folder is the Parent Survey. The survey is new this year. We developed it to give the parents the opportunity to give the center feedback on their child's UPK experience. The survey was sent home in April. We are looking forward to the 2017-2018 school year. We will be introducing a Socioemotional Assessment Tool into the UPK classroom in this new school year. The assessment tool we have chosen is the DECA Assessment. We look forward to continued success with Learn as You Grow and the North Syracuse Central School District UPK partnership. Thank you so much for your time.
Any questions?
Great presentation. There were a couple of questions that you answered at the end. Thank you very much.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much.
I'm Cindy Fowler. I'm the Director at Northminster Early Childhood Center over on Buckley Road, and this is our, the 16-17 school year was our seventh year serving as a UPK program for North Syracuse Central Schools. This year, we had 35 students, and they were taught by two teachers, Jamie Kerr and Christian Susu, in the morning classes, and Mrs. Kerr had an afternoon section. Mrs. Kerr had 18 children in the morning, so she had the benefit of having two assistants with her class. Our usual daily routine involves learning activities with daily choice time, dramatic play, blocks, writing, and sensory interest centers. This is one of our assistants, Christine Dahlman, reading to the group while the teacher was out of the room. Our creative curriculum is one of the foundational pieces for our program, and it includes daily read-alouds. And then each day, the children are rotated through academic learning centers for English skills and math. And of course, we always involve the kids with art activities. We have the benefit of having a large muscle room so that the children have large muscle play every day, whether it's indoors or out. This is three of the UPK children who built a snowman one afternoon. We also employ a music teacher who has, offers 20 minutes of music class to each of the UPK classes, and then she presents a concert in December and also again in May for the parents. We address the different domains of the Pri Kindergarten Foundation for the Common Core, and these are the units that were taught this year. Several of the one-word titles are creative curriculum titles. The upper right-hand picture shows the children using Play-Doh to form the letter of the week, and that's a Handwriting Without Tears Get Set for School activity. The children again are involved with some math activities in the lower picture. The goal for us for kindergarten preparation is for the children to be able to count from 1 to 20, get one-to-one correspondence to match the numeral up to 5 with blocks or pictures. This child is working on matching the number of objects in the picture and putting them in numerical order. They're also learning to short, sort by shapes and sizes and to make patterns. Our Learning Without Tears, that it's called now, is a very basic part of our program, and these, this children show, are seeing, working in their personal workbooks. I love the lower picture because it shows the perfect balance between work that's done at the table and sensory in the background with the sand table. So in the program, we are looking for introducing the children to literature, print concepts, how, how print is placed in the book and how a book is read, you know, left to right. And we're learning letter sounds, a phonological awareness, and word recognition. This year, we beefed up our sight word teaching and had good success with that. Notice that the children have proper pencil grip, that there are several gains in activities with Get Set for School that teach proper pencil grip and posture that the children use while writing. This year, we had a really good parent involvement, and I think that's one of our program's success. We do focus on the kindergarten preparation and the skills that are necessary and needed. Have a supportive, positive atmosphere and focus on individual competencies with parent conferences in the fall and the spring, as well as teacher-based testing throughout the year. This year, the, the parents really got involved. Our parent organization was in full swing from September through June, and this upper picture shows one of our UPK parents presenting on children with special needs and how our environment can be adapted for people with physical or, or mental limitations. You can see the kids are really engaged. Then the lower picture shows a visiting orthodontist teaching the children proper toothbrushing and talking about dental health. We also emphasize service learning in the program. We did a coin drive for Griffins Guardians. It's a family that established that charity that are, or actual, they're still residents of the North Syracuse School District. And we did a trikathon in the spring for the, gosh, for St. Jude's Hospital. With our parent-led fundraisers, we did a spaghetti dinner in the fall, and we're able to fund a parenting seminar led by Tanya Gesick. She's a PhD psychologist in private practice that we heard speak on challenging behaviors, and we had a really good turnout to that seminar for parents and funded through their, their involvement with us. Okay. We use the Brigance Screen 3. It was published by Curriculum Associates in 2013. In the fall, the children took either the three-year-old or the four-year-old pre-test. The percentile score, the mean percentile score for the academic score was 44.9 in the fall and went up to 46.8 in the spring. I really should explain the circle graph because it looks like we went a little bit backwards there. There are, there are 23% of the children tested showed above the gifted cutoff in the fall, and then we only showed 17% in the spring. But this is because the kids transitioned to the five-year-old test, and it's actually teaching, or testing for the kindergarten standards. So we'd like to continue with what we're doing, focusing on the Get Set for School and also the, the creative curriculum. I'm pleased to say that we, we want to continue the Parenting Association and their very strong involvement. And again, repeat some of the seminars that we were able to, to give this past year. We, in your purple folders, there's a sample of a typical newsletter that goes home to parents. These are sent home twice a month, and it includes news that's going on in the school as well as a blurb from the UPK teachers. This past year, we were involved with a New York State Quality Stars Program, and if you're not familiar with that, it's a large grant available to preschools from the, from the New York State. And there's, it's a lengthy process of self-examination and evaluation. We do not have our initial rating yet, and we would be rated from one to five stars, but pretty soon we will be hearing from our consultant. And there are 75 very lofty standards that we were, are, were tested on. If we get a three or better, an independent group comes in and evaluates using the Early Childhood Environmental Rating Scale. The good news for us is that all that hard work will allow for some funding. Already, our consultant was able to send our teachers to Albany to be trained in creative curriculum, which was a great opportunity. It would, it would have been very expensive to bring them to us. And the, she also bought several new units of the creative curriculum for us that was a big help. So we're looking forward to implementing those new curriculum idols and those units this year.
I don't think so. Thank you very much. Our last presentation tonight will be from our administrators on the summer accomplishments this year.
I have the honor of going first and talking a little bit about business services, and I want to just preface this slide by saying that the district was a buzz of activity this, this summer, and what you have in front of you here are the, the accomplishments of the business services area that I think will make an operational difference in the district going forward. There was a lot of work that we did that are huge, huge projects that did not make the list, such as cleaning all the buildings and waxing the floors and maintaining equipment and doing all that kind of stuff, but you guys know about all that kind of recurring activity, so I wanted to focus on the things that are new, new initiatives. So in information technology, we installed wireless access points and servers, or it's switches at CNS, the Junior High, and Main Street EEP, and we are finally wireless district-wide. And I have to, I can't say thank you enough to these three buildings for their patience. It's been a long time coming, but they finally have wireless services. And a lot of work for our IT guys, but they did a great job getting that done. Upgraded all of our teacher stations at the Junior High, which was a big deal because we moved them all to Windows 10, and, and so that was a, that's a great, great system for the teachers, and they were, again, long overdue to be upgraded. And we implemented a thing called System Center Configuration Manager, and what that basically means is that for years, we've gone out and actually touched a lot of computers. When we wanted to upgrade the image on the computer or the BIOS and, and some of the critical programming on the computer, we would run around with a thumb drive and upgrade these computers, and if you can imagine thousands of computers, that's insanity. So we implemented a, a piece of software that allows us to remotely upgrade computers and push images out. It increases the efficiency of the IT department and the effectiveness. We can, we can ensure that we'll have consistent images across the district, and that makes for a much more reliable platform. In the business office this summer, we've been focused, and I would say for, for a while now, on just trying to go paperless wherever we can. We implemented, and we've started to implement, and a number of groups are using it, are the WinCap Employee Attendance Program. We used to send paper forms around that used to have to be signed by different levels of managers and then entered into the computer. And now, if I want to go on vacation, I just get on WinCap Web, and I, I basically request vacation time, and that automatically gets an email. She approves or disapproves it, and that is automatically ready to go into, into the WinCap system to monitor my, or to account for my attendance. So it's much more efficient. We eliminate paper, and, and I think it's a much more effective system for employees as well. We've also increased our expertise and risk associated with capital project paperwork. We're working with fiscal advisors to, to basically monitor the work we're doing and filing forms with state ed relative to capital projects, and, and that's, that's been a big help and certainly created both efficiency and effectiveness. And we redesigned our ERISA process. Now, I don't know how many people, there are employees in the room here. Every year, we get this crazy package that is mandated by law that we send out literally, it's 20 pages front and back printed about benefits information. And I'm, I'm sorry to report that most employees rip it open and they're like not even sure what it is, and then they throw it away. And so it's, it's just a crazy regulation, and so we've worked really hard to create to a paperless process. And so next year, we've designed the entire process, and we've begun to implement it. So what'll end up happening is employees will get a postcard saying that they're willing to receive this information electronically, and then they'll, it'll tell them where they can go and review these documents with some additional information, and we can just handle the employees so much better, provide much better information, and comply with the law at the same time. And so, again, that's a paperless initiative. Just think about the savings in postage is over a dollar to melt each of those packages. So we're thrilled to be able to get more efficient there. Transportation. One of the big things I have to credit Matt Conti that he's done is every time we have a problem now, Matt's looking to form an employee management committee around that problem. And it doesn't have, it's not some big fancy process, but he's getting people together to talk about, you know, management and, and drivers and attendants, to talk about safety procedures and protocols, standard operating procedures, and, and driver and attendant training. And so we're just finding it's a really collaborative environment where our drivers are working really well, drivers and attendants are really working well together to recognize when we have issues and to fix them. On the communication side, we're, we were really happy this summer to roll out our new district website. I hope all of you have had a chance to see that. We welcome people's feedback. We're soliciting feedback from folks, and we, we tried to parse out our site so that we are separating it now so that community-facing stuff is on our website and staff-facing things are on our new staff website. So our staff can go to a place where it's really just staff resources for them. And so both of these are new, and we've, we've made a tremendous amount of progress, and we're really proud of the way they look, and I'm sure we'll be doing a lot of fine tuning over the next 12 months. One of the things you've all heard about, and I personally had very little to do with, but the communications folks, Lori Cook, worked with the net and others to get the Vision 2020 brochure completed, and that's, that, that document is, is really important and a major accomplishment of the summer. Maintenance and operations, as I mentioned, they, these guys had a lot on their plate this summer, but one of the biggest things that John did this summer was supervise the rewiring of those three buildings, CNS, the Junior High, and Main Street, to facilitate the wireless. A huge undertaking, and that was done and actually completed earlier than we expected. We reconstructed the stairs, the entryway, front and main and north, and then the west entrance at the Junior High. We installed, installed new access control panels. So we're really focused on our security, and we installed access control panels, brand-new ones, in every single building so that we can do a better job of controlling security. We installed new camera systems at the Junior High and a new exercise station for Gillette Road Middle School. And we completed the Bear Road designs and paperwork for SED, so we're ready to roll with that project and got our initial design and, for the roof and tennis court project, which will be voted on here in a couple of weeks. And then finally, in our food service department, we're continuously trying to work to appeal to the students and meet their nutritional needs. We've designed and are rolling out a vegetarian offering. Now, we've always had foods for vegetarians, but we really haven't had dedicated entrees, and so that's something that's going to be coming out in the 17-18 school year. Those are some of the things we worked on this summer. Any questions or comments? They'll be submitted to SED within the next week or two. Yeah, we presented, was it last month? Yeah, we presented them last month to, to the board and whatnot. Yep, yep. I mean, recognize, recognize that there'll be some detail, sorry, there'll be some, you know, detailed fine tuning as we, you know, the project's still a ways out, but the, the major points of the project have been, have been designed, and those plans are finalized. The fine tuning of the specific look of a classroom and where things will be laid out, those are more granular details that'll come as we get further along with the project.
And the floor plan, like where the?
Yep. That's pretty much, that's pretty much done. Yeah, that's done. Yeah. So I, I don't have the exact date, but it's here in the next week or two. I can get that for you. Well, that's the problem. It could, it could take, it could take six to 18 months to get back from the state. The one thing I will say that they've done, they've actually engaged outside engineering and architects to review these plans. They've kind of outsourced that process, so we're going to be looking at that closely to see, you know, how fast projects are flowing through SED.
So the, the Vision 2020 brochure was shared with adminis- every administrator shared it with staff at their opening day staff meeting. Doing it and using it tomorrow at our district advisory council meeting, so we're beginning to roll it out with all the various groups. And I'm planning to do a presentation for the board at the next board meeting about how our mission, vision, goals all led to the Vision 2020 book.
Okay, as you can see, we had a pretty busy summer, and this is just my little piece of it done. Had a huge piece with the technology that went on. So this summer, with the K6 Bounce Literacy that we've been doing, oh, this is our second, actually entering our third year. We had a study year last year- We had a study year last year, was the big rollout. This year is the third year of putting it in, or second year of putting it into play, but three years. We had Jennifer Saravello, who joined us from HMH, which is Hooton and Harcourt. She came, she's a huge guru nationally and internationally that has written some very valuable books that the teachers use. And the teachers spiral bound it, and it really helps them to work with their kids. Look at it, they'll be a certain level in what they're presenting, in their reading, and if they have problems, they can go to the book as a resource and say, this is what I need to do with this kid to get them reading better. So we, she came, we had over, almost 200 attend that all the way through high school. It was amazing. And the high school loved it. They came because sometimes we have to look at those strategies to help kids advance. And it really, a strategy's a strategy, it doesn't matter what age. So they came, and it was really exciting. And from that, we're going to start the secondary look at balanced literacy. And we started this summer bringing in seventh grade to start that conversation. And so they are now in the phase of that, and then we'll move eight, 12 after that. The grading initiative, we had Rick Warmly come and talk with people, over 200 people attended, and that is a district mandate. So we had him filmed, which is awesome. He allowed us to film him, and then we will roll groups through watching that and having conversations. And the grading committee will work on that. They're meeting this Wednesday to talk about how we'll facilitate that conversation through everybody in the district because we have new report card that started in K4, and we worked on that this afternoon on the rollout of that. The co-teaching workshops is another, as you know, has been a big focus. And Lisa and Julie Costin have been running some workshops. They did a two-day session in June, and then I believe they did some in August, and then they're continuing this fall. And she just called me right before school, work let out, and she said that we have another 59 to accommodate, and that there's over 200 co-teaching teams that she's trying to get through some work. So we're working through that and working with Julie. And then we're talking about how to build capacity with internal people to keep this work going, because we won't always have Julie. And we want to build the capacity with our teachers. Project-based learning was, again, an opportunity for teachers to take. And I know that we had 20 learners in secondary that participated in that this summer, and BOSIS leads that for us each summer. So that has been a big focus. And then how to build a better test to make friends with data is one of the things that Donna Marie does within our normal curriculum process. And you can see, I won't read all the curriculum that was written this summer, or rewritten, or revised, or whatever. It's a normal process because once you get through the curriculum, you need to know what to do with the curriculum, how to give formative assessments so that you get some information better, your instructions. So that's, of course, and she'll offer that again on superintendent's, possibly after school. And then social emotional learning is the up-and-coming work that we're doing, and this is with Lisa Goldberg. And she has a think tank right now of administrators, president of the union, and some teachers. And we started that work to look at how do we embed this within what we do every single day? Not an add-on, but how we treat, taking a look at our process when kids are struggling. It might not just be academic. It could behavioral, it could be emotional, it could be mental. We need to support the whole child. So that's the work that we're doing at this point in time. And you can see that we have a lot going on in curriculum. And K12, they're in the grading initiative now. We've moved from the curriculum, and we're talking about how do we grade differently? And that's going to be a study focus all year long that I'm working with them. And then science, you know, has a brand-new curriculum phased out and in with the new stuff for our new test in 2021. More to come on that.
I just have one question. You, you mentioned in the grading initiative that there's a mandate for the professional development associated with that.
Correct.
So how much PD is mandated outside of just that one? It seems like quite a few of these are areas that we need work in. How can we compel people to take the professional development that we offer to them?
Good question. So the part that is mandated is they have to see warmly. And we feel that that has been the foundation of all of our work, unless you have that foundation and why we're doing what we're doing. An important part to stress is this is not new work in the country. This has been going on since the 1980s. So this isn't brand-new, and you know you attended warmly with us. So taking that, everybody will see that. And then from there, we've built PLCs, which is professional learning communities within each of the buildings. And so, for instance, I'll just take the high school. They have a very strong group that offers PD Thursdays, I think they call it, or there's another name for it, something Thursdays. But they do it on Thursdays. And what they do is they do a different piece of it each Thursday, and they talk about, they've been getting up to 40 at a time wanting to do it. So I know that all of the elementaries have professional learning communities that are going on. And for instance, the report card is driving that conversation. So I'm pulling grade levels, and we're going to have all of third come together and all of fourth come together, and we're going to talk about what does grading mean? And then the secondary have also PLCs that they're doing that work, and they're also going to participate in the PD Thursday of grading. So the conversation should continue, but the grading committee has yet to outline even more detail to that, which we'll do on Wednesday. So I'll have more on that.
Which I, you know, I think, to be honest with you, watching his presentation in person probably is a little better than watching a video of it, just because you can, I, I think you can feel the energy with him. But, you know, specifically like co-teaching workshops, like how, how do we address those?
Patrick, let me, let me jump in here because you know that we offer an incredible amount of professional development. I think in one of the Friday letters, I actually attached the printout of the numerous opportunities this summer for teachers. But we've had conversation with the union. And last year, to roll out the K6 literacy, professional development with that was mandated. And, you know, as Don just mentioned, the, the grading is mandated, and also the co-teaching. There's mandated co-teaching training for co-teacher teams, as well as teaching assistants that are involved this year. And the way we go about doing that, we try to offer it at a variety of times. We offered some opportunities during the summer, and then, you know, that doesn't, not everything works for everyone. So the other opportunities now that we're doing, for example, with the co-teaching, we will offer release time with substitutes and pull people during the workday, as well as offer an after-school option. So those are the three areas right now that are a focus that we are mandating.
I think that answers my question about it, because I was wondering how you would-
How you, how you manage it.
Yes, because it seems like it's a huge task in a very short period of time. The summer isn't as long as people think it is.
So our, back to the grading committee, they will facilitate those conversa, after watching a little bit of warmly, then they'll have conversations about it. It's not the best, but we did capture, I think, close to 300 came this, not bad. We'll, we'll get there in time.
And like you mentioned, I mean, this is something, I think Erin and I talked about it in the past, I mean, this is not a new idea, and it's not one that's been revisited. I don't know why we haven't done this before, but I-
Don, with regards to the new report card, what are we doing to roll that out to parents?
So tomorrow night opens, open, starts open houses. And so the teachers, I have a teacher working on a PowerPoint right now that share with everybody to share with the parent. More education has come, but it's really, this report card is new, but it's not new. When you look at it, it's, it's, I, we always say, it's like the in-between step to where we want to be. So I don't think parents are going to be shocked that this looks that much different. The only thing is, we just talked about the conversation we'll have with all parents and the words that we'll use so that everybody's receiving that same. So for instance, when you look at the new report card, there's characteristics of a learner that starts, and then you start your subject areas after that. So there's a key for characteristics of a learner, and I can't remember exactly, but I just looked at today, like M, making progress, whatever, not like ease or whatever. And then there's a 4-3-2-1 scale for everything else. And so it's showing them the different keys that we, we want, the characteristics of behavior to separate from the academic progress. That is a change because in the past, we have rolled those together. So if you couldn't control yourself, it might affect your grade in your reading, but that really has nothing to do with it. We need to report out about your behavior, as well as where are you academically. So that is a change, and we talked this afternoon, and they're going to spread that amongst themselves during open houses.
So there's going to be more consistency among grade levels?
That is the hope and dream.
Because I mean, it's just, I have, I, I personally have kids in three different buildings, and though wildly different, it's not even funny.
So just to be fair to parents right now, this is a work in progress. So for the first 10 weeks, we're going to have conversations about what does it mean, a four mean, a three mean, et cetera. We probably will not have a perfected system yet. It's going to take us a good year having those conversations because it goes along with our, but we'll be closer to some consistency in that, the conversations that happened with the curriculum. And that, that's really an important piece. This ELA was rewritten this summer for K4, and it, the beauty of it is, the curriculum was rewritten to match the report card. Vice versa, I should say, the report card matches the curriculum better than it has in the past. And so now is the conversations with teachers. Could be a year of calibrating, in a sense. Of course. Yes. It is. It is. No, no. And we're really talking about how do we get a mindset around how we treat our learners? And so it's really not going to be this added-on curriculum versus what is the, you know, internal mindset we need to shift toward? And it goes with grading. The beauty was, and I was telling you that earlier, is I just had the report card committee, and all of a sudden, the light bulb went on, that all of this ties together. And they went, oh, because your grading goes into your balanced literacy, your balanced literacy goes into grading, your social emotional learning, all of that is now your inclusion, all of that is coming together. And so the social emotional learning is just a mindset of how do we look at the individual learner versus my child against your child against, this is now the child against the standard and them individually against the standard, which is our social emotional learning.
So each week during the Friday letter, you receive an update as far as class size K6, which is constantly in flux. So class sizes just continue to either go up in certain areas, depending on the building, depending on the grade level. One of the things that influences class size sometimes is our new kids that move in, babysitter approvals, and depending on the grade level from year to year, it's an interesting thing to try to supervise and monitor. I know our kindergarten class size initially seemed quite low, and it was at 528 in early July. It is now up to 594. Our cohort, we're hoping to at least reach 600. There were years, probably not too long ago, those cohorts were closer to 700. And you can see the spike sometimes in some grade levels. I think the highest spike right now we have is about 680 for cohorts. So again, when Don talks about as far as declining enrollment in certain areas in central New York, we are subject to that, but again, we have not declined as much as some other districts. In fact, if you were here at any time within the last few weeks during the registration process, this office has been busier than we can almost keep up with, and we've had a kind of an upsurge in the amount of people that have registered. But again, there are people that have left, so there is a plus or minus. So each week, as you see, class sizes are monitored, and we're trying to make sure that we're also being fiscally responsible when we come to you with staffing. From what we had proposed to the, the board in the spring, we have added two K6 teachers and also one special ed teacher in all this. And again, that's supervising who's coming and going within the district.
Dan, before you go any further, just to touch on the kindergarten class size, since we've gone to full-day kindergarten, has there been consistency from kindergarten to first grade, where before, we used to take a little bit of a jump for the first grade due to parochial enrollment?
That is correct. We do not get as much of the jumping from parochials from kindergarten to first grade. People will either start with us in kindergarten and continue. Very few, compared to where it was before, are coming to us in first grade because of the full day. We've really picked up a number of students because of that, because of that move. But with My Learning Plan, as Don was pointing out, our curriculum has been very focused, and the platform that we use is My Learning Plan to house all of the workshops and things that we do over the summer. And one of the things that we are trying to make sure is that, not only with the focused workshops, but if you use Vision 2020, everything is kind of planned as far as what we're looking to do, what we're looking to accomplish. And the workshops that we approve, we're trying to make sure they are in line so that we're meeting those goals. We do have other workshops besides what you saw for all of our teachers as well to take a look at, and there are proposals that are submitted to My Learning Plan that sometimes go outside the scope of some of the focal areas, because some of our disciplines, it's very difficult for them to find workshops that are either for technology or for maybe physical education or art. So there are things that are submitted to My Learning Plan that we have to sit and go through and then approve for them to be able to take those workshops in the summer.
Now, are there ways for, you know, an evaluator, a director or a principal to assign, you know, those professional developments to somebody's learning plan? Or is that something that they choose, one of our staff members, do they choose that? Or-
They, they choose those, but we do have directors and things submit things to us as far as what would be certain workshops or professional development-
Based on somebody's strengths or weaknesses?
That, that would be, and they, they make suggestions, CTs will make suggestions, and then people can look at what BOSIS is offering and/or possibly outside of BOSIS if BOSIS is not offering that particular avenue.
So it's not necessarily placed, but it's, a suggestion's made at least?
There it comes, yes. Now, with what Don was talking about with some of the work that's been done in the buildings with technology, summer school for the second year had to be moved out of the district to have all those things occur, whether it be the junior high and the high school. And it's created a little bit of difficulty with transportation. And Matt has done a phenomenal job with his routing and, and those things for students. We've offered a few more opportunities through Apex and working with the high school, and Apex is a credit recovery piece as well. So that has also been an avenue that has helped students that do not get the credit in during the school year. We also offer what they call summer review classes. So there are students that pass the course but fail the regents, and they don't need necessarily the C time, they just need a little bit of a refresher. And one of the things that we used to do is, we used to catch the students right in the beginning of July and go for three weeks, but the regents is about mid-August. And so what we ended up finding is, you'd have that gap where students, if they were getting that refresher, there might be a little bit of regression right before the test. So we've put that, post, pushed that out. So we start usually about the third week of July, and so that course will go right before the regents, before they finish with the summer review, and then they take the regents exam. We found that we do a better job with our summer review than summer school. Summer school has started to offer summer review, and most of our students stay with us in order to take that. The special education delivery model has been tweaked, and one of the things that we've done, especially with the elementary, as you know from the committee, we're looking to work into the secondary. But we're trying to align things with staff and looking at ratios so that it, it's a better scenario for students. So trying to have two teachers in the co-teaching model, working with more students to provide a more focused- a more focused time for them in the classroom is one of the things that we've been looking at. And trying to allow more time for co-planning also, so that they don't have to run from one teacher to the next. So we've provided more opportunity where the special ed teacher is in the classroom all day. We haven't done that across the board because we haven't been able to fund that, but we've done much more in that area to date. ENL has been a real treasure lately, and it seems to be growing in leaps and bounds. We've split the program where all of our ENL students at the elementary level would all go to Allen Road. And as of last year, we really predicted well because we realized that we couldn't sustain just one school and branched out to Cicero. And we've kind of have a northern and a southern end to the district for ENL. And as of the other day, just in one elementary building, there's 27 new ENL students at Cicero Elementary. So between the two elementary schools, we have 72 students and growing. That's something that we'll probably be having a further conversation on because there seems to be just this sprawl, and we're getting more and more students. And one of the things that I spoke with Annette and Don about is, given the nature of some of the tragedies with the hurricanes down south in different locations, the last time we had a major disaster with Katrina, Syracuse is a harbor city, there were students that came not only towards the Syracuse area but Syracuse universities. I anticipate there may be families that have gotten displaced, whether it be Florida and/or Texas, that may end up north at some point. And depending on how far out from Syracuse they come, that may be an issue that we have to address. With that being said, if, one of the things I did leave off at ENL was, with the website, we were realizing that we need to work on our communication with the amount of families that are coming in. So if you go to the bottom left-hand portion of our new website, there is a spot that asks for language selected. There's probably anywhere from between 45 and 50 different languages that will convert the page into that language of choice. So it's been one of the things that we're trying to make sure that we're able to provide for our families. And one of the main things is activities, lunch menus and things for those families that the parent may not have a true command of English.
Before Dan finishes, I just want to add one thing to the summer school conversation. I want to thank Dan and Bill Leclerc for their creative thinking out of the box this summer because at the very last minute, right before, the last week of June before summer school was set to run, and we're at the mercy of BOSIS, BOSIS informed us that they were canceling out numerous classes that we thought were going to be offered. And they put their heads together and came up with some creative solutions that we handled in-house. And I want to thank them. If they did not do that, we would not have seen any of those students at the August graduation, all of them. Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just want to also thank you for putting these Regents' Review classes on the schedule because that's very important. We've had years where there wasn't even a test in August to retake it if the students didn't pass, so I'm glad that you're thinking about.
And every year, we listen to what's going on, and we tweak, and we try to add some more things. We've had other districts try to jump on the bandwagon with us. I think the first year, it was Algebra II or Chemistry that wasn't being offered in many districts, and they wanted to come to us to be able to take that August exam. And the parochial schools also come to us for any summer Regents exams and Regents Review as well. And I did try to provide in the Friday letter just a little bit about that class size interpretation, so I hope that helped.
Appreciate that. Bye.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you. As you can see from the list, there's a lot of items that the Human Resources Office handles that are not particularly glamorous, but they're fundamental to the operation of the district. We do a lot of database management. We work with Donna Marie Norton to make sure that the state of New York gets accurate information. As you can see, many of the first items on there are related to that. I do want to share that for the first time since I started in North Syracuse, the state of New York took a year off from creating a new mandate that we had to figure out and navigate. So that was kind of nice to be able to just do what we did the previous year rather than have to revamp things. So that was, that was a great benefit to us considering the amount of hiring that we had to do this year. And this is the exciting part for me. Bringing in the new staff is one of the favorite, my favorite parts of the job. And we hired some amazing people this year. As you know, early in the summer, we have two new associate, a House III principal and associate principal at Rocksmiddle. They got started in July. Absolutely fantastic feedback, them getting their feet under them and getting started in the position. We have a new principal at Lake Shore Elementary. Nothing but great things being heard so far about how the year's starting off. I feel like we did just a really fantastic job this year, bringing some new administrators on. And we, you know, spend time with the new teachers during new teacher orientation, and I just think we have a fantastic crop. So even though you hear a lot about a teacher shortage and a lot of the difficulties associated with that, and I'll be frank, we do have some areas where we have some real difficulty finding candidates. I still feel like we had a very high level of rigor in our hiring and interviewing process. I feel like we got some fantastic candidates, and I think our kids are getting the absolute best. So I feel really, really proud about how the summer went with all the hiring and bringing new staff on. And also, to make you aware that this year, we expanded new staff orientation to a three-day program. Again, I cannot say enough positive about Alicia Pizzuto and the consultant teacher team. You know, we expanded to six consultant teachers. They took this program by the reins and gave just a really deep and enriching program of things to help our new staff get their feet under them and have a great first day of school. So I just really have nothing but great things to say about the hard work that they put in the summer to make a great orientation experience.
Thanks, guys. Before we move on, I want to have all the PIG students come up and have assigned your forms. It's after eight o'clock. So if you guys want to come up, anyone around the table can sign your form.
Do we have a curfew at eight o'clock? They should go home and go to sleep.
No, I don't.
Okay, so moving on to comments from the audience, we have none this evening. Will move into any board committee reports?
The First Policy Committee meeting is next Monday.
And we have a date for the Legislative Committee, and that is October 3rd, which is a Tuesday.
Time, Paul?
Oh, 5:30 typically. It'll be on the agenda that goes out, right?
Yep. Any comments?
Just, you know, just, I write a lot. I went to the hot dog roast. I know I saw a couple of you guys. Really nice time for the kids to get to know the school. Time that went into it. I also really liked the fact that they really incorporated a lot of kids in that welcome. I mean, I'm sure they had to be ninth graders, so they knew the school. But they were tour guides, they were in the area helping out, they were the core interns that we see on our core site, and they had a spot there. So there was a lot of good things going on. And also, I went to the new teacher luncheon, which a lot of you guys went to. And I spoke to a lot of, well, not a lot, but some of the teachers that I had a chance to talk to. And it was really interesting that some of them came in early on in the middle of last year, and they were getting their new teacher orientation now. So it's interesting. I was thinking about maybe, you know, is there looking into some sort of short new teacher orientation for when we get people that come in in the middle of the year? Because it's such an odd thing, and yet, you know, they get thrown into the, you know, thrown into a classroom like that. But in any case, I'm really glad they've gone to three, three days for orientation. The union contributes to that too, don't they?
Yes, it's a joint effort.
What I thought, okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
I'm happy to, um, meeting different instructional districts. It's been an outstanding, eye-opening. For the ribbon cutting for their new. It was really neat to see the kids cut it right out there and use their own body weight and just do their thing. So it's been a really interesting couple of weeks for me, so.
I just have a couple of things. First off, this is our first meeting since the start of the school year, so kudos to all the staff for a smooth opening. I was telling Annette and Don earlier, I didn't really get a lot of, we don't think we got any emails on the first day of school. Whenever it's quiet like that, it always indicates to me that things are going smoothly. So great job over the past two weeks. Summer's always shorter than people realize, and seeing the presentations tonight for our accomplishments, it's absolutely incredible in two months what we can get done with the collaboration between all of these different departments. I mean, what the four of you are in charge of with these projects, but then crossing over and managing, you know, at a cabinet level, it really is impressive to see how you do it. And it's always great to see our staff come in, teachers come in on their vacations to come in and do some summer workshops. It was great to have Rick here, so thank you for coordinating that. So yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations, everybody, for a successful summer and a smooth school opening.
So I agree, and I want to thank my cabinet for sharing the accomplishments tonight. Last week was incredible. I managed to get to every building, spent some time in numerous classrooms, absolutely, totally enjoyed the kindergartners. That, you know, that's what it's all about. You watch them get off the bus. They don't even know how to get in a line. I mean, you know, we take so many things for granted. But it really, it's a tribute to our staff and what they do on a day-to-day, you know, week-to-week basis, how they help to shape our young people. So it was exciting. It was also exciting because I sat here and listened to the accomplishments tonight, and we shared the Vision 2020 booklet with you, and we're going to talk more about that. But as Don alluded to earlier, the pieces of the puzzle are really fitting together. All of these focus areas are coming together, and we're seeing what it means for students. And I wish that I could have had each of you kind of with me and follow me around last week because that's what's happening. You see it in the classrooms, you see all of everyone's hard work coming together for the benefit of our students. And it was really, it was an exciting and very successful opening. So we wish everybody a great school year.
So moving into routine action items, do I have a motion to take A, B, and C as a group? Mike, Patrick, all in favor? That's unanimous. Discussion action items, recommendation to create a 1.0 full-time employee Director of Instructional Support for Special Education. Do you read this?
I'll just mention, you know, based on recommendations and feedback from Dr. O'Neill's report and feedback from staff for last spring, administrative cabinet spent an incredible amount of time this summer, really giving this some serious thought. And so tonight, we're asking you to create this director position. Approve tomorrow, Jason will launch off with the posting and recruitment and hiring process and all of that. But in addition, later on in the agenda tonight, you'll notice that there's some title changes for some of our directors, and along with that, is some shifts in responsibility. So we really believe that this is hopefully going to be a more effective way for us to lead instruction.
I just have to piggyback, and I've been vocal against this. After reading through and having discussion with you, this is, I think, a great alternative to what our previous process was. So I appreciate the time.
Definitely makes sense with the reorganization. And then I'll talk about B, and we can take A, B, and A and B together. So the one employee TA for Smith Road, I take it that's just four?
We had a student move in from out of state.
Yeah, it's an additional one. So do I have a motion to take A and B as a group? Mary, Jackie, all in favor? That's unanimous. Item C, gift for the new school board. This is just another installation as part of our contract. Surplus of non-marketable and unmarketable equipment. I'll take your word that there's really not much on there that we need to install. Okay, well. And F, we have the acknowledgement to appoint an impartial hearing officer pursuant to Part 200 of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education. Sorry. Amendment to the July 10th Annual Organization Meeting. This is to add our new Lake Shore Elementary principal to our list of principals for the DASSA Act. And Patty Cash. Acknowledgement of appointment of impartial hearing officer pursuant to Part 200 of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education. The recommended board action is to acknowledge the appointment of David Oaks as the impartial hearing officer as part of the regulations from Commissioner of Education. Do I have a motion to take C, D, E, F as a group? Mary, George, all in favor? And item G, retirements. We have two retirements this evening. Judy Henches is a special education teacher who's retiring with 12 years of service to the district. And Wes Fraley is a bus driver who retires with 26 years of service with the district. So we wish them well and a happy retirement. Personnel, A, B, and C, do we need an executive session before we take them?
I have a question about involuntary transfers that are on that. Is that something that's been discussed at one of the meetings that I wasn't there? It's, well, it's in that instructional, it's in the instructional support. Two involuntary transfers, it looked like they swapped places, is what it looked like.
Yes, it was based on the fact that we had a resignation at the last minute, which allowed somebody who had previously been involved. Addition to that, reading teacher that agreed to go over to another building on a temporary basis to help out because they didn't have any staff on that particular site. Yes, all those details were worked out with the union.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I just, I understand that we can, we can, we have the right to do it. I understand that. I just wanted to, I just didn't know if we had discussed that or...
And we do have the right to do that, but the contract says give 30 days notice. So in cases where that didn't happen, we worked jointly with NSCA and it...
Like that word right there. Thank you.
Okay, so do I have a motion to take A, B, and C as a group? Paul, Aaron, all in favor? That's unanimous. I would like to make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the Transportation Bargaining Unit to review the employment record of two individuals and to receive an update on three items relative to potential litigation with action to follow in the executive session. Do I have a second? Mary, all in favor? That's unanimous. We're adjourned.